Welcome, everyone, to this regular meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, May 9th. The time is 7:30 PM and our first order of business, as always, is the Pledge to the Flag. Today, we are lucky to be joined by Cub Pack 51, one of our local Cub Scout groups, and they're going to come forward and lead us in the Pledge to the Flag. Thanks, guys. Will the clerk take the roll?
Counselor Perry Collins.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. Item four on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion that we approve item number four on the agenda, both A and B, as presented.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item five is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number five, the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us all the way to number eight, which is comments from interested citizens. And if there's anybody out there in the audience who wants to come up to the podium and tell us what they're thinking, please do that at this time.
I can't believe they have nothing to say.
I think that you should put more money into health than education.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. Next time. All right, well, I don't see anybody else jumping up to the podium. Are there any thoughts from our council members?
Just wanted to say I met with this group last week and what a spirited group of boys they were. They had so many concerns that they were not hesitating to bring to the table. So I have spoken to several people who work here at the town hall about some of your issues and we're working on getting them addressed. But thank you so much for having me. It was such a pleasure. You guys are great and I hope that as you live in our community, you'll think about being up here one day because we'd be very lucky to have you. I also want to say that on Wednesday, there is a Light the Dog Park fundraiser for the people who are raising money for the solar lights for the dog park. They've been working so hard and just doing an incredible job. It'll be at the Elks Lodge. I think tickets are $20. They can be bought at the door and I know that they would love to see some community support. So I'll be there and I hope other people are, too.
I've got a few things, if I could. This weekend, our Parks and Rec did an amazing job. There was a dedication for Brandon Michael Austin Basketball Court over at Fagan Park. There's a new water fountain. His mom did an amazing job putting together this gathering. There were butterflies released. She had food and a DJ and Terry Murphy was there and actually was shooting some hoops and I saw her get her first one in, which was very impressive. Yeah, the URI basketball team was there. It was really a great job and what a beautiful, beautiful way to honor Brandon. So that was lovely. Also, there was an Easter Seals event on Saturday, their annual derby party, which was wonderful. And then later in that evening, a bowling fundraiser for, to raise money for skin cancer. So it was a very busy weekend. And next weekend will be busy as well. If you haven't heard, there will be a steak fry at the VFW, I mean at the, sorry, the Elks Club to raise money for the VFW post. It's Saturday, May 21st, which is Armed Forces Day. So it's a great day to come out and support the VFW. The Narragansett Lions Club and the South Kingstown Elks are partnering to put on this steak fry and all the money raised will go to the renovations of our local VFW post to make a handicap accessible and just overall renovations that are desperately needed. So if you are around on the 21st, we would love to see you. It's from 5:00 to 8:00. And if you have any questions about it, feel free to call.
I would also say I don't think we had a chance to sit down this weekend. We were at so many events. But I also would like to put out there with no definitive timeframe, the Elks Home Wrap Program. They have been advertising. This is a program that they received a grant for the past two years and this partners up with seniors in the community who do need some repairs, minor repairs, major repairs to their home. They are and continue to look for volunteers. So I look out in the audience and I see the Boy Scouts to help out with some yard work and it would give a little bit of opportunity to community service projects, if you will, and anybody in the community who would like to help out. Those funds have already been designated, so it's no money out of pocket for anybody. It's just a little bit of labor of love for our seniors in the community.
Any other comments from council members? I saw a couple people come in late to the audience. We are in comments from interested citizens. Sure. Just state your name for the record, please.
So my name is Justin Bristol and I'm a resident of Mattoonik, Rhode Island, and it's where I've grown up. And so I'm a university student right now. I'm a senior at URI. And like many of you, I saw some things that I don't like happening in the world, so I decided to get up and get active. So last summer, I built a solar-powered food cart in my backyard and it's going to be called Solar Cart Cafe. It's going to be serving local, organic, and sustainably-produced produce and food on the cart. And it's an entirely employee-owned business and we'll be trying to operate as sustainably as possible. We've just started a farm, too, in Mattoonik at my friend's house and we'll be trying to serve the vegetables at the farm, from the farm, to the cart and then from the compost from the cart, bring it back to the farm. And so we're going to be putting in a peddler's license application for the town of South Kingstown and it says that it needs to be approved by the town council. So we're wondering if that's possible and upon approval by the Health Department, which will be getting inspected next week.
Sure. Thank you for your comment. I think Dale will probably be helping you out.
(inaudible) the form will allow. (inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other takers, that brings us to our town manager's report.
I have no items other than ones we've already covered in the pre-session. Be glad to answer any questions on any of the reports that have been provided today.
I think you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to appointments. Did we have anybody who needed to be?
Yeah, I think we have.
Kenny Burke?
Yeah. Oh, it is? Okay. Thanks.
Then we'll take it right through to new business. Item F, which is a resolution.
We have an application for Kenny Burke for the Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee for the Wood Pocket Tuck Watershed Association. He's been mentioning it for a while that he was something he was really interested in and I would make a motion that we appoint him. I don't think we have any or have received any other applications for it, so I would make a motion that we appoint Kenny Burke to the Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee for the Wood Pocket Tuck Watershed Association.
Second. So moved.
I do have a question. Did we have any other applicants at one time or did they rescind their applications?
We had somebody who resigned, I think.
(inaudible).
Any further discussion on this? All right, all in favor of appointing Kenny Burke to this committee, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item G is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Martone Service Company of Narragansett for regional wastewater treatment facility roofing system replacement and repairs in an amount not to exceed $210,400, including a $50,000 contingency, and is further described in a memo from the Public Services Director to the town manager.
As noted in John's memorandum, there were three bids that were submitted for the, for this project. They ranged from the lowest qualified bid at the $160,400 to a high of $278,500. John spent considerable time in review with the contractor and the subcontractor that would do the work for Martone. All of that came out with a recommendation to award to the lowest qualified bidder. We are including a major contingency based on, once we pull that roof, remember, off, we're not sure what we're going to find underneath. That may take change orders. So we'd like to have that authorization now, as noted on the agenda, at the amount of the $210,400.
I make a motion to approve item number 12G.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item H is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute two five-year lease extensions with a 2.5% annual escalator with Marina Bay Associates for the use of municipal property at Marina Park from May 1st, 2016 to April 30th, 2021. As further described in a memo from the town manager.
Marina Park Associates has two separate leases with the town. One is for wafting rights for the docks that are located at Marina Park. The second is for a small piece of land which provides their administrative office and restroom facilities for those that lease spaces during the summer months. They're just closing on a 15-year lease agreement with the town. The 15-year lease agreement had a five-year renewal option available to Marina Park Associates, limited to financial adjustments. We've agreed with them, based on what we see with our other leases there, to a five-year, 2.5% per annum increase in the rents. Combining lease number one and lease number two, they'll be paying approximately $27,500 in the 16, 17 year and that'll escalate through the last year, 2021, to about $30,330 based on that 2.5% escalator. I would recommend the council approve it as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item H as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution adopting the town of South Kingstown Investment Policy Statement and incorporating the town's fund balance policy, originally adopted June 27th, 2011, with amendments as presented in Appendix A. Further resolved to approve the program recommendations presented within the investment policy statement regarding the investment of all town funds, not otherwise covered by any separate agreements, trust indenture, or bond covenants, or pension or retirement funds. Further resolved to authorize the Finance Director to seek proposals for investment advisory services, as further described in a memo from the Finance Director to the town manager on May 3rd.
The council met at 6:30 tonight to review the development of the investment management policy, which is a component of the agenda this evening. Why don't you just spend a couple of minutes in terms of a general explanation and then we also have the consultants with us tonight that assisted the Finance Department in the development of the draft policy that's before you. The Finance Department has been working over the past couple of years on major revisions to both the budget and management controls, the development of new software, the development of new hardware, and the entire new financial management system that's been instituted. What we're now looking at, in addition to the development of a new budget document, is to now look at policies that deal with all financial management practices. One of the most important and key policies will be for proper management of investment of vital funds. The town secured the services of PFM Asset Management last year and had them do a cash flow analysis and a review and a development of the investment policy along with the Finance Director and then to provide recommendations on proper investment portfolio management and different options that would be available to the town. That was then incorporated into an 11-page policy. The policy which is available for review this evening and was included with the agenda talks about where the authority comes for investment management through the municipal charter, the restrictions on where funds can be invested via all-state laws. Those have been reviewed through the town's legal council to ensure that a comprehensive listing has been provided. It also will provide general information on what the objectives of the community are and the community's objectives as far as dealing with investment management is to ensure that all the investments are of a legal nature, that they're safe for the principal, that the liquidity value that's necessary to run day-to-day operations is taken into consideration and managed as a separate means of investment and that we look at what a prudent return on investment should be, as well as measurements on how we can review the performance of any investment advisors that we would use. The cash, the cash flow analysis documented what the values were for monies that we would need for short-term management of the municipal programs, as well as the core value of the portfolio that could be invested for a longer period of time, thereby providing greater potential for investment income. It also set up the need for internal controls, as well as reporting responsibilities, both to the manager's office and on an annual basis to the, to the town council. It also defined in detail what type of investments could be made, what type of securities. I think that's the highlights of the program. There's also another component is to look at what the allocation restrictions would be. This ensures that not, that investments won't be in one side of the market or another type of investment, but will be spread over multiple areas to protect principal. It also looks at what maximum maturity should be. So all of these policies then provide the direction to the Finance Director to be able to properly manage the funds that are, that are held by the town. As noted in the cash management review, on average, we could be managing and investing up to $52 million on any quarter or any month of the, of the year. Certain portions of that are necessary to pay bills and the other portions are available for long-term commitments and greater return on investment. The reporting requirements, as I said, will provide detailed analysis for council's review. We will also be looking to hire an investment advisor. The investment advisor would then, based on direction or delegation by the Finance Director, be able to work with brokers who would then place the investments on the town's behalf under the Finance Director's review and control. The policy also establishes what the minimum qualifications are for an investment advisor and also what minimum qualifications would be for, for brokers that would be working under the advisor. I think it's a very comprehensive document that provides prudent cash management directives for the, for the community and certainly will provide rating agencies with a better understanding of how we, as a community, manage our, our community's resources. There are three components of the resolution that's before you tonight. One is the adoption of the investment policy and a recommitment by the council to the town's fund balance policy. The fund balance policy has been restated only in the sense that we're defining the general fund as inclusive of all expenditures within the general fund and all expenditures within the school fund. That's the only real change within that. The, so you would be asked to adopt the policy as presented and the appendix, which deals with the, the fund balance policy. A third component is the documentation of where monies can be invested based on state statute. Fourth, we'd be looking at the council approving the program recommendations for investment policy management for all the funds that are not managed through our trust funds. And fourth, would give the Finance Director the overall authority to be able to begin the process for the securing of services of an investment advisor for the community. So I'd ask the council to consider the adoption of item I as presented on the agenda. As I noted, if there are questions from the audience or from the council, if our investment analysts are here this evening, to be able to answer any questions that may be of a detailed nature.
Are there any questions from council members? I think your presentation to us in the work session was comprehensive and thank you for the, for the report and thank you, Trish, for all the work that went into the policy. Are there questions on this matter from the public that are present?
Bill Rosen from Kingston. It was mentioned that there's about $52 million at any one time that's invested. I was wondering what the distribution of those investments are in securities, bonds, and real estate, et cetera.
It's all the fund balances with each of the different special revenue funds, the capital, capital project funds, as well as the town's general fund. General fund has about $10 million that's invested at this point. The wastewater management program, which holds money based on the fees that are collected for connections of around $5 million and it goes from there. Infrastructure fund, which is for road improvements, I think sits with about $3 million. Dr. Rosen, if you want to see the list of all of the funds, I can direct you to page 42 of the.
I'm, I'm just looking for, being the type of scientist I am, just looking for an approximation. Usually when we, as an individual, I invest in securities, bonds, et cetera, or do my investments, I usually divide it up so that it's, there's a, a good diversity within the portfolio. So I was just wondering, is it 60/40 or 70/30 or whatever?
It really, we're not looking at it in that, in that manner. I mean, what we're looking at is the monies that we need within the 12-month period to be able to pay bills or on a quarterly basis. Then what we're looking at is the monies that may not be necessary for a period of 12, 18, 24, what, 36 months. We would then be managing and investing those funds in, in, in different, different types of securities that would be based on recommendations that would come from the, the investment advisor.
I think maybe Trish can correct me.
(inaudible).
That's the sole vehicle?
(inaudible).
Okay.
(inaudible).
Okay. So, so there are no long-term investments in terms of?
(inaudible).
Okay. Will the Finance Director then have long-term authority to, to do some long-term investments?
(inaudible).
Well, I haven't seen the policy, so I don't know.
We've got it on the table, Bill.
Okay. Oh, I missed it.
Just so the microphones can pick up some of that, so what this policy would be doing, Dr. Rosen, people who might be watching at home, up until now, we've really only been able to invest, invest this in very short-term cash, like CDs. This will give the town flexibility with a financial advisor to invest in somewhat longer-term but still very safe investments. So I think it's a great policy. Any other comments?
So being, my name is Justin Bristol again. Being a student at URI, I can kind of like see the internal workings of the student population and I study economics as well. And what I've noticed is that there are 6,000 people who stay on campus during the fall through the spring and most of those people do not have cars and they're kind of limited to on-campus, develop, like they can buy things on campus, but they can't really go off-campus because they don't have cars. And if you've ever tried to walk to, like into town from URI, it's really difficult because you have to walk on 108 and cars can go really fast and there's no sidewalk there. And then also, there's a bike lane, but it's really unmarked at, from the campus, so you can't really see, like, if you're, if you're from Connecticut, you might not know how to get into Peastale. So I think the town could have a big opportunity to get some development in the Peastale area if it was more accessible by alternative transportation, by route of like a sidewalk to either the bike path or to Peastale.
If it's about the investment policy.
It's, it's an investment suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll have to come back when we start talking about our Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay.
Steve, can you help me out with what kind of alternative investments you'd be talking about over a period of 12, 24 months?
Steve, you want to field that?
Sure. He's got the microphone. Yeah, why don't you use the mic?
My name's David Reeser. I'm with PFM Asset Management LLC. I worked with the town on the development of the investment policy. The investments that you're asking about are, as, as Councilman Collins referred to, are relatively sa- safe investments, which are restricted by state law to primarily US Treasury securities, securities issued by government-sponsored enterprises, which are also referred to as federal agencies, FDIC insured bank-type accounts, which the town is currently invested in, securities of that nature. So we're not talking about equities or anything of that sort. State law actually would prohibit investment in that type of security for, for the funds we're discussing.
Right. So up until a few years ago, we could have invested in Puerto Rico bonds with that formula, municipal bonds. But anyway, the point is, you're really restricted to Treasuries and quasi-government agencies, am I right, Steve? Okay. That's really what I needed to know. But we could always put the money in McDonald's or Microsoft to have 2.5%, 3% yields and frankly, those folks have more cash with their investments. Maybe we ought to consider that. But this certainly makes sense, but you're not going into derivatives, you're not going to be anything crazy here, so.
And that would not be a permanent investment under state law?
That I know. I used to sell these things, so I mean, I don't know why this is even an issue. I would expect our team here to invest and through you, basically, the best of quality. We don't need to take any risks right now, so I'm not even sure why this is a discussion. Thank you for your time.
I think it's up for discussion, Jim, because what we're looking to do is to have the first written policy on best management practices.
I know that, but having worked with you for decades, I wouldn't, I would not expect anything less. Thank you. (laughing).
Very good.
I think that's a compliment. I'm not sure.
I, I think so. All right, I see no other comments. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve Agenda Item 12I.
I second that motion and I want to congratulate and thank Trish and the hard work of the people who have come to the town to give a wonderful presentation, to keep us informed, and to continue to keep our rating as strong and as, as healthy as it is for the people who live in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. I would entertain...
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.